Need to call this meeting to order, January 3rd, 2024. In attendance, we have Randy Isar, Jane Nevinsmith, myself, Amy Parsons, Joyce Chambro, and Molly Keegan. In accordance with Mass General law chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, signed by the Governor on February 15th of 2022, I announce that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's office via Zoom, and ask if there is anyone present who is also recording this meeting. If no one is recording, let the minutes reflect that nobody else indicated that they are recording this meeting. 3.1 Consent Agenda. Warrants AP 2424S, AP 2424, AP 2425S, AP 2425, PR 2412, PR 2412 supplemental, and PR 2411.
So whom to accept?
Second.
All right, motion by Joyce, seconded by Jane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent. Public comments. So the public comment period is a time for the public to bring their concerns before the Select Board. The Board will hear public comments for 15 minutes. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes so that other members of the public may have an opportunity to speak if they wish to do so. Is there anyone here for public comment? All right, excellent. 5.1 Old Business. License Renewals.
And so there's one company that has submitted their renewal, Kittleton. It's an automatic amusement. I'm so sorry. That says entertainment. It's an automatic amusement license. I apologize. That's a typo. I didn't make a form because there was only one, so I just threw it in there. It's an automatic amusement license. They've already were approved back in September of last year for their first time, and this is renewal. Y'all do have several businesses that are outstanding, and once I return from the New Year's break, I gave them a couple of days for the mail, but tomorrow I'll start going out with the renewal packets and helping everybody who's forgotten to get them in. So on the 17th, we should have a cleanup of everybody.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the Kittleton Automatic Entertainment.
Amusement.
Amusement licenses presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Molly, seconded by Joyce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, 5.2 Boards and Committee Acknowledgement Forms. So we have requested that all boards and committees adopt the Code of Conduct and for the individual members to sign the acknowledgement form for the Board and Committee Handbook. This is an update of all the received adoptions and acknowledgements that we have so far.
I have a question for you before we vote. Is that going to be on a yearly basis or is that going to be for term of the committee or the board?
It's a term. How long though?
Another term.
And the committee itself adopted it. It's not a person. It's the committee. Just standard practice as with y'all's policies.
Okay.
And just a question. Have you, 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 or Carolyn received any concerns about adopting it or approving it? She might have heard. I have not.
The only, some people just flat out have not responded at all, and I've sent several emails. And then, you know, the Planning Board is, they're elected officials. I was informed they will not sign as the Planning Board. However, I do believe the individuals for the other committees they're on that they're appointed to by the Select Board, I do believe they'll be signing for those. But that's the only one I've heard back from. I think Lynn Latham and I had, who's the library, Chair of the Library Trustees, she and I had a brief conversation about it, and I don't know where they settled on what they were going to do, but they have not turned anything in as of yet. I really wanted to get y'all's feedback on what next steps you want me to take.
Is there something, is like liaisons that we could present, you know, to whoever we're liaisons with?
I've been wondering if like all of these committees have a chair. You know, like starting with the chair and then ask, at least ask them to.
So I sent a large email out.
Because I'm just, again, I'm just wondering if people are doing.
That's how it was. It went to the chairs, and the chairs really have been reminded.
Right. And then like Amy says, if we don't hear back from the respective chairs, then the liaison could reach out to.
So you would like me to reach out one more time to all of the chairs? And then can you put a deadline on that? Like if you don't hear back by the 17th or if you don't hear back by March or April, February 6th? And then I would let y'all know which one of your liaison committees that you need to reach out to. I just would like to have a clear deadline of what you would like.
That would be good to have you reach out to us still so we could reach out to them.
Yeah, like I mean, like two weeks. I think that's appropriate. I think most people would be back from any holidays or vacations.
That give you enough time, Jennifer? Those two weeks give you enough time or do you want?
For me, I'm just going to send them the email that I've sent them three times already and say, you know, the Select Board does ask that you review this and that you adopt the guidelines at your meeting and that you have your committee members acknowledge that they read and received the handbook.
Or are there any objections?
Yeah. Okay, I did not do that. I can add the end or both objections.
Are there any committees that only meet like a few times a year that might not have?
I think I noted, if you look at the Community Preservation Committee, they are going to adopt it on February 6th.
Okay.
But when they got this email, they had already concluded all of their meetings.
Okay.
And so I was in touch with the Chair of that committee, and she said that that's their intention. So that could be it for others.
Okay.
So January 17th, if I don't have them, I'll contact y'all's individual liaisons.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, should we skip 6.1 until after the appointment or can you? Do you think that'll?
I think that's what we was just talking about.
Okay. All right, so 6.2, the DPW Committee Mission Statement and Task. So that's an attack file. Is that something that we?
That's, that should be, yes, that's, that has been reviewed and they approved it about an hour ago, so I popped it on there. So.
Okay.
Motion to approve the mission statement unless somebody wants, unless we need to.
Do you need to read it?
No.
No.
Well, I think the important thing to note is that there is, I think what we've been missing in other committees, we're not giving them a purpose. And so this is just clarifying that, and they all discussed it and agreed upon it and what the, what the deliverables were going to be, exactly what the role was, that they would be working together to put RFQ together, how the process was going to work, being that they're ultimately reporting, making recommendations back to the Select Board as the governing.
So the only question I have on it, Carolyn, was one of the deliverables we talked about tonight said that they're going to be charged with coming up with a timeline. You know, so there's no, right now, there's no timeline on the deliverables saying that these will be met by such and such a date. So would that be kind of the next?
Yeah, I think we would know better. Once the RFQ is put together, we know what the advertising schedule is going to be, the posting. And then, because it is two phases, it's hiring the OPM first, then hiring an architect. So I think as we get a little bit further down the line, we'll have some deliverables needs.
All right, I'll second.
I wanted to ask that you appoint the committee for the completion or to term, to the completion of the project or term, whichever your pleasure is, that that way it doesn't have to come back because this will be a multi-year project. So that way they can just complete the project, and that's what y'all have done previously with other building committees.
Yeah, I would say completion, not bad.
Make a motion to keep the board members until completion of the DPW building is finished.
You want to just read who they are for the public? Yes, Jim Maximowski, Scott McCarthy, Tom Quinnlin, Randy Isar, Gary Berg, Andy Klopaki, Walter Zikowski, Richard Bermucci, David Phil, and Carolyn Brennan.
The David Phil Jr. or Senior?
Senior.
You should designate that.
What?
The senior.
He just doesn't have the two behind his name.
Well, they're David Phil. They looked at it, they read it, they were okay with it, but if that's something you want, I'll go back and say.
I think people in town would like to.
I'll ask him. It's not the community rules. Sorry. Okay, motion by Joyce, seconded by Jane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
And then do you want a motion, a separate motion to approve the mission statement?
Yeah, you had already appointed the committee.
So we had appointed them through the completion.
Okay, so that was for, so the second vote is going to be to.
Accept the.
Accept the mission statement and deliverables is presented for the board that is going to be their completion. Okay. Motion by Joyce, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Molly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so 6.3, which is the appointments. So we're going to appoint Human Resources Payroll and Benefits Assistant, Emily Toro Matun, and Hadley Police Department Dispatchers Ethan Nesbit and Gabriel Chambers.
Police here. Johnny, do you want to introduce?
Johnny, come on up.
So I'd like to introduce Emily in person. She wanted to come in to meet you all herself.
Okay.
And we're going to start Emily on Tuesday, January 16th. I'm very excited to put her in that seat now. Get her started on helping with payroll and so many other projects. I'll let you, Emily, tell you a little bit about her.
Emily, what's your background a little bit?
So I come predominantly from the medical field. Currently, I'm a medical assistant, but pretty much I was an EMT for a little bit.
See, I'm in the medical field predominantly though. Doing a lot, a lot on the data entry side with medical billing and dealing with customer service on that end as well.
It's a little bit of detail orientation required there.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Welcome.
Recording.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We'll see you at town hall.
All right.
We've got dispatchers on, we got, I see.
We've got some dispatchers.
Doing it, I think we need to vote on it.
Dispatchers.
You could vote to appoint Emily, and then you could do, you could do them all together or you could do it separately.
All together. I move we appoint both. Do you want me to read them out?
Well, Megan's here.
Yeah, Megan's here.
Can you run a little something about the?
Sure. Dispatch supervisors, dispatch supervisors here, Megan Cahill.
Hi, Megan.
Hi. Good evening.
Thanks.
So we're recommending to hire both Ethan and Gabriel. Ethan Nesbit is from Dalton, Mass. His most recent position is as the VIP Concierge for a luxury resort in the Berkshires. So he has a lot of experience in customer service and dealing with people as well as technology. He has a keen interest in public safety and emergency telecommunications in particular. We're recommending that Ethan be hired as a full-time employee. Gabriel Chambers is a resident of Leeds, Mass. He's a recent graduate of the Criminal Justice Program at Smith Occasional High School. He's currently a military police officer in the Army National Guard and wishes to become a dispatcher for the Town of Hadley in progression towards his dream of becoming a state police officer when he's old enough. We recommend Gabe as a part-time employee for now with the hopes of promoting him to full-time once he's through the training program to fulfill our last dispatch opening.
Thank you.
So make a motion to accept the recommendation from Megan Cahill to appoint Ethan Nesbit and Gabriel Chambers to the dispatch basis.
Second.
Hey, motion by Molly, seconded by Joyce. Can we just have an amendment to also add Emily?
Good job.
Oh, sorry.
And also to appoint Emily Toro Matun as the new Human Resource Payroll and Benefits Assistant.
Second on that too.
All right, motion by Molly, seconded by Joyce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right. Is there any items for future discussion that we would like to add to a future meeting?
Yes.
All right.
Scott McCarthy contacted me today questioning the town's, let's see, rationale, if you will, and that's my word, not his, of plowing certain private roads. I know it's been a policy in town, but he's called me about a road that's in severe disrepair, and he's very concerned about destroying town equipment. So I think we need to have a discussion about how we want to deal with situations like that.
What roadway is that?
It's got no name.
I wouldn't be specific.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be specific because it's future agenda item.
It's a future agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they can add that for sure.
I had mentioned before talking about the communication protocol, just who responds to whom and when, and just general discussion about that when we have inquiries coming in.
I thought we had, we had gone over private ways at one point, didn't we not, Scott? Certain roadways, whether about the plow. Have we ever looked on over that at Nodja, I think, over the years?
So I think there's a specific question, and again, I would, I would definitely want to discuss.
We'll add that.
Future meeting.
All right.
For sure.
One more time.
All right. Anyone have anything else? Okay. Any liaison reports?
I could do one. Wait, can I do that? What I have to say would probably take up the time right now, so I won't make.
Sorry, public comments are only three minutes. You're going to get eight.
I can do one really quickly while you're looking for that. Okay, Housing and Economic Development Committee, as you recall, with both Select Board and the Planning Board, to talk about moving forward with an educational housing forum for open to the public. Tentatively, we've landed on the last week of February and then a follow-up Q and A program the first week of March, I believe, the date, again, tentatively is February 27th for the housing forum. We're in the process of putting together and confirming speakers for that and content, and so more to come on that front.
So our Staff Sergeant Mike Romano had received an award from the Western Mass Chief Associations. Just a brief history of Mike has been with the force since 2014. In 2015, he was assigned as the School Resource Officer for Hadley. Mike had never had a role like this, and there was no blueprint for how to perform these duties. He built the foundation for Hadley's SRO program, which now has multiple officers certified. And each of our schools welcomes us because of the relationships Mike forged with administrators, staff, and most especially the students. In 2018, Mike was promoted to Sergeant and has taken control of the vast array of administrative programs. He handles our entire cruiser fleet maintenance program, and he has been facilitating one of the first fully operated body camera programs in our area. Most recently, he laid the groundwork for our main marine patrol, which allows our department to contribute to the Connecticut River Task Force to help keep the local waterways a safe place for all to enjoy. He was recognized with the title of Staff Sergeant and demonstrates that he is our senior most sergeant and one of the most highly respected and trusted officers in our agency. It means so much for our organization to have the Western Mass Chief Association select him for this award. Each year, the organization gives out several awards and scholarships, but I personally feel that this award is the most prestigious. When I was notified that Mike was selected, I contacted his wife, who has been by his side throughout his diagnosis and treatment, and we worked out a plan to keep it a secret from him. So in my role as President of Western Mass Chiefs, I was honored to not only be able to announce his name, but was also the pure surprise in his eyes when he was, when he won. So Mike has certainly been awarded this. He battled his leukemia that he was diagnosed, and the town rallied around him and supported him, and he's come back full force, light duty first, and has done a really good job. So, you know, very pleased that he has won this award. So congratulations to Mike.
Indeed.
Take up enough time? Almost.
Well, I think you have some announcements. Or can you just, sorry, I think I was just in Molly.
Okay.
Jane, but can you, do you have some announcements?
I do. I can do those quickly. So part of my duties of this Select Board has been to pass our condolences on to family members who have, we've had town residents that have passed. Of late, it has been Robert Rodak. His family is well-known here in Hadley, so our condolences to the Rodak family. He was born and raised here, went to Hopkins, and did farm work throughout on the, I think, Rodak Farm. Eleanor Burek was a staple in our town and the school system and the cafeteria. She was well-known, very dedicated to our students in the lunchroom. She was also a minister, ministry.
Right, ministry.
Minister.
Ministry.
Ministry at the Holy Redeemer Church. Our condolences to Eleanor's family. Alice Underwood, she was sister of Shirley Parsons, and Nancy Johnson. Our condolences to Parsons' family and any other relatives that she may have. Edward Mitelowski did not live here in town at this time, but was a graduate of Hopkins Academy. His parents were Edward Mitelowski and Stella Tesorick. We also have the passing of Rosemary Bristol Skiba. Her maiden name was By. Her daughter Bonnie lived here in town. Her son predeceased her, and her grandchildren are Tony and Jackie. So our condolences to them. We also have the passing of the Silica Arthur Verdi. She is the mother of Elaine Princibelli of Hadley, and she also had three other sons. So our condolences to this look goes family. And that's what I have.
That was my grand aunt.
The Leska.
No.
And then just going back to the housing forum dates, luckily, the person in charge of booking the senior center is nearby. So the planned dates are Thursday, February 29th. Yes, that is the 29th. It is a leap year. And followed by a question and answer period after that informational session on March 7th. Thanks, Jean.
Okay. Um, anyone have any other announcements?
Want me to?
You have another one?
I do.
Okay.
I'll do it quickly. So I was going to do it at the end, but I guess I'll do it now. So Happy New Year to everybody, and I've been asked on numerous occasions if I'm going to run again this, this spring, and I'm not. So I am stating that I am not going to run. I'm giving enough notice to people who would like to have this position. I first started in 1988 on the school committee and had 15 years, five terms on the school committee. And I've had, at the end of this year, it will be seven terms on the Select Board. So I hope I have, it's hard to say this, should have done at the end. I hope I have served the town well. I have enjoyed it. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you. You're still going to be here.
And I'm not gone. I still, I will still be gnawing at you, so.
And just remember, only 15 minutes for public comment.
I think that, so, yes, anyway, that was my thing for the evening so that would give people time to do whatever they would like to do for the coming elections.
And that will plan the party, little fish.
And look, it's 6:30.
Perfect timing. All right. Hi.
Hello.
You're like a staple at our meetings now.
There we go.
You got tired of the Planning Board. Now you came over here.
Little meeting person, so it's good to see people. Do you want me to go? Do you want to read the public notice?
Okay. Just open it here.
Okay.
Oh, great. Okay.
So they're looking to alter their premise.
Sure. So for the record, Tom Reid, Attorney at General Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of, came over, doing business as the Quarters, which is over on Eight Real Road Court. And yeah, what they're looking to do is alteration of the premises, and so there's really two parts to it. One of them involves the outdoor space, and the outdoor space has existed since 2014, but the most recent outdoor space came into existence in 2021. There is a governor order that allowed it to exist, and now the law has changed where April 1st, 2024, if you haven't gone through this formal alteration of premises process, then it reverts back to what the licensed premise was prior to that governor's order. So that's part of what we're doing. So it's really more of a formalization of that exterior space. And then the second piece of the alteration of premises is for some about 900 square feet of interior space. The business was fortunate enough to get some of the interior space, which I believe the lease wasn't renewed. And so it's just, if you're looking at it, it's to the right on the inside, and that's, that's about 900 square feet of that interior space. And so really simply, all they're asking for is to alter that licensed premise to include that 900 square feet of interior space and that, and then formalizing that. It's about 700 square feet of additional exterior space.
Are they doing modifications or just adding it?
Yeah, they're, they're, so the outside, and I think you've got this in your floor plan. I mean, they've got some barriers on the outside. There's some seating on the outside. And then on the inside, I think they're about through the building permit process where they've received, I think they've received sign off for CO for those spaces. So yeah, they are making some interior improvements to make it usable space. I think it was storage space previously.
Have they been to the Planning Board?
They have not. And our understanding is that we don't have to go through the Planning Board.
I would.
We have. I have.
You, you've talked to the Planning Board?
I have checked with the Planning Board, with the Building Inspector, with the Fire Chief, and the Police Chief.
And they're?
Everybody is in compliance and knowledge about this and have reviewed the plans.
My one question, just related to that, would be the, the obvious, which is always parking. And I know that the Quarters went through that previously and satisfied, so this won't have any impact if the Planning Board would have said so.
I would assume that the Planning Board, well, Mr. Dwyer just raised himself up.
Oh, good. Mr. Dwyer, help.
We previously did have a discussion with a architect representative of the business. We determined that the, there was no need to come to the Planning Board for the internal expansion because it did not trigger any of the criteria for site plan approval. We did approve enlargement of the outdoor seating area back in March, I think it was. The site has adequate parking, but as a condition of approving the expansion of the outdoor space, we did ask that they activate what had been earmarked as reserve parking. And I believe they have done that on the westerly side, our easterly side of the building. It's a long, narrow lot that actually goes all the way out to Middle Street. So what they have been using for parking is on the westerly side of the building, but they, they also have all the green space on the easterly side available for parking. So we, and remember here, the parking is determined on the basis. And remember here, the parking is determined on the basis of the size of the structure, the business use of the structure, not the particular use. Of the entity, so. We, we had previously determined that there was adequate parking for the. Structure and there is adequate parking for the outside dining area on the premises.
Thank you.
And just being squeaky clean here, I just want to disclose that my oldest child runs trivial matters. At the quarters, so I don't believe it impairs my judgment, but I just want to make sure people are aware of that.
You play too many games.
Hey, he's employed.
Good to me. Any questions, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jane, seconded by Joyce, any further discussion? All those in favor? Excellent.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you soon. Happy New Year.
Alright, and last but not least, six point one, Mount Warner and Mount Holyoke Water Storage Tank Project. And Scott is here and they're individuals online as well. Alright, and Ty and Bond Engineers are here as well. On the line. Alright.
Uh, good evening, just wanted to bring an update to you about the Mount Warner. And Mount Holyoke Water Storage Tanks. Kind of decision time for the Board of Water Commissioners to determine our next steps. Randy, our liaison, has been involved with this a little bit, so he knows a little bit what's going on, but just for an update. In our sanitary survey from the DEP in late twenty twenty-one, it was brought to the attention that. Our water tanks needed some work. Painting and et cetera. In the spring of twenty twenty-two, at the annual town meeting, the town approved three hundred and ten thousand dollars. For us to try to paint the water tanks, as we started looking into this project. And we found out that it is a lot more complicated than you think to paint a water tank and et cetera, so we decided to. Have Ty and Bond come look at this project and give us their opinion on the matter and it comes to. Comes to us that the tanks are starting to get close to their life expectancy, so there's kind of two options with this. There's a rehab, you know, possibility or replacement and. It, it's a very complex project and it's pricey also and Danielle Texera. And Jeff Faulkner are here from Ty and Bond to give you a little presentation on our findings thus far on the project.
Hi, everyone, my name is Danielle Texera with TimeBond, I'm project manager working on this project and then there's also. Jeff Faulkner is on the line too, he's the project director. So I have a presentation here, I'm just gonna share my screen. Everyone can see that?
Yes.
Great, alright, so we just talked about Mount Warner and Mount Holyoke Water Storage Tanks. So, these are some aerial photos of the site plans for each of these sites, so the Mount Warner. Photo on the top, the, the yellow box is from, I think the assessor's website, I think it needs to be adjusted, so I just. Drew in what we're assuming as the property boundary there, but the Mount Warner Tank was constructed in nineteen sixty-three. It's a sixty-eight foot diameter tank with a height of about thirty-five feet on a parcel of point two one acres. The Mount Holyoke Tank is a little bit newer, constructed in nineteen seventy-six, sixty foot diameter and. A fifty foot height on that tank in a parcel size of about point five acres. So as Scott mentioned, there was an inspection conducted in twenty twenty-two. Underwater Solutions inspected exterior and interior of both of those takes and recommended that they be rehabilitated. As there were signs of exposed steel and corrosion. So we did, we performed an alternatives analysis where we looked at. Rehabilitation versus construction of new tanks and a couple of different types of tanks. During that analysis, we looked at site constraints, they're on very tight parcels, which makes construction of new tanks a little bit difficult. They're also surrounded by Massachusetts owned vertical ninety-seven land, which really can't be touched. And they, we also looked at time of construction, how long it would take to construct each different type of tank. So I'm just gonna go through kind of a little bit more in depth of all the alternatives and how we came out to our. Proposed alternative, so the first, the rehabilitation, both of the tanks would need a new coating system on the interior and exterior. Of the tanks, those coating systems only last about approximately twenty years. So as, as Scott had mentioned, so the total lifetime of steel tank is around eighty years, so for the Mount Warner Tank. It would basically, one rehabilitation before you would need to replace that tank. Mount Holyoke is a little bit newer, you might be able to get rid of, get by with two rehabilitation cycles, but ultimately they would be needing. Both would be needing new construction soon. The rehabilitation is slightly lower cost, but the maintenance is very expensive, as you'll see soon. So we also looked at ground level pre-stress concrete, so this would be construction of a new tank. This option had the highest capital cost and the construction constraints here are a little bit difficult. You need a lot of space on the site to construct one of these tanks because the, the concrete panels take up a lot of space. When they're actually constructing the tank and the total construction period is quite long, six months, which is difficult to have. A tank offline for that long amount of time. The expectancy, life expectancy for this tank is, is about eighty years and there is minimal maintenance required. When compared to a steel tank. And then the other option we looked at was a composite, ground level, glass fuse, steel, water storage tank. So this one has a lower lifetime cost and a much shorter construction period compared to the. Concrete tank, this is really only, can only be provided by one vendor, which is Aqua Store. And it's a little bit newer to water storage tank potable use in general, but there are several tanks. Being used and have been constructed and are, are working very well. The life expectancy for these tanks is around seventy-five years and again, minimal maintenance is required for these tanks. So based on cost, site constraints and the time of construction. We are proposing going with the ground level glass fuse steel tank. So this is a conceptual cost summary table comparing the rehabilitation, which is on the bottom line. With the glass fused steel on the top line and then the concrete tank in the middle. So as you can see, the, the capital cost for water storage tank rehabilitation is, you know, the same order of magnitude as. Similar order of magnitude as the, the capital cost for construction of a new tank, so with that alone, one point one million. For rehab versus a one point three for new construction, it really makes sense to just do. The new construction at this point in time, these costs all come from, directly from vendors. Proposals and they only include the cost of the tank itself, so it does not include. Site work, it does not include any additional. Any additional features of the tank, so Mount Warner would also need a new altitude valve, some electrical updates. New fence, both of them need new safety appurtenances, they both need mixing systems, so. When all is said and done, from design through construction for both of these tanks for the new construction. We'd be looking at a cost of around nine million dollars on that order of magnitude is what we would need to fund that project. And here is the preliminary project schedule, so we're hoping to obtain some funding through USDA. It's a forty-year loan at low interest rate and there is principal forgiveness on that loan, but we first need to. Get the funding approval at the town meeting before we could get a sign off from USDA on their application. So assuming that the spring town meeting is where we would get the approval. Then we would submit the USDA application and start the design of the tank in the fall of twenty twenty-four. Go through bidding in the winter so that we could get construction started by the spring of twenty twenty-five. We would do one tank at a time, so we wouldn't have both offline at the same time and we would probably do. Mount Warner first, followed by Mount Holyoke and the project would hopefully be finished by the spring of twenty twenty-six. So that's. All I have for the presentation.
One question, is, is it the removal of the other tanks also?
Yes. The other takes are being removed and the one that's not in use, including the one that is not in use on Mount Warner.
So both of those would be removed and then one put in place? And there's only one tank on Mount Holyoke?
Correct.
Public funding for this?
Some found in here right now.
The, the only, the only thing available would be some loan forgiveness at this point from the USDA. But until, like Danielle said, we don't know what that is until we start going through the process and. That's why I'm here tonight to ask, what are our next step? We have to do something with this, whether it's the rehab or the replacement, we're, it's mandated by the DEP, we have to do something. And into which one it is. I, I would really recommend probably replacement, as you, you've seen in her presentation, it's. What, three million to refurbish or eight million to replace, we're, we're going to have to replace it eventually. If it's not this cycle, it's the next one, so in twenty years or fifteen or what have you, what's the cost gonna be then? It's only gonna get, be more expensive.
Can I just ask a question, one of, I was a little bit composed about one of the slides. I think the one that was showing the lifetime class under the refurbishment where it showed. You know, the cost to refurbish being, you know. Very comparable to replacing it. Uh, yeah, thank you. For the rehab. It has a ninety-five year lifetime compared to seventy-five and eighty for brand new construction.
Cause the rehab is twenty, will give you an additional twenty years plus, after twenty years, you have to replace it with one of the two above options.
That's correct.
So, yeah, Molly, it's ninety-five years total and we're already in it for seventy.
Okay, alright, got it. So it's not like we're getting another, yeah.
And, and depending if, if something happens, if the, there was fatigue of metal in the tank, et cetera, it, it could be. You know, deemed inefficient a lot sooner, we, we don't know, there's really. We're going off a report of divers that are diving inside the tank visually looking at the, you know, the inside and the outside. There is some, you know, things that need to be addressed and, and what's happening in the metal between those two points, there's really no way to tell.
So there's really no compelling argument for rehab, I mean, it's not.
I was just gonna.
It's not moving the bolt forward.
I was gonna ask, I know that we cut the recommendation was, you know, based on cost, but. Is there much of a, a difference as far as like our climate and our weather? Between the pre-stressed concrete or the glass fuse to steel, like?
So, there, the glass fuse, they're, they're in the northeast. Before the Christmas break, we, Southampton has one, we, we took a ride out to Southampton with Ty and Bob and the vendor, looked at the tank. I forget Danielle, it, it's ten years old or so?
Yeah, I believe so.
It, it's about ten years old and it, it's in excellent shape, all, all they did to it was pressure washed it. It, it's, 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 it's like the new thing with water tanks, the glass fuse, it's basically. The same style tanks that are at the Barstow Farm, if you ride by there, it's the same kind of. Yeah, we did, when we were in the area, we went and looked at a, a pre-stress concrete to, I mean, it's concrete, it ages, it. You know, grows moss and et cetera, there's maintenance cost on it, but the, the biggest thing with us is the site constraints. And then the downtime too, the downtime's a killer for us, because we take Mount Warner offline. You know, there's potential pressure problems, so we need to get back up and running as fast as possible. And the, the glass fused, it, it's a lot faster constructed.
How long's that technology been around, Scott?
Can you answer that Danielle, I don't have the.
I, I can answer that, Danielle, it, it's been around over twenty-five, thirty years in the water industry. It's also been used in the farming community as for silos for even longer than that. The glass fuse to steel is a panel-based methodology, so it's manufactured essentially off-site. Comes to the, the site as panels and it's constructed relatively quickly.
If, if there is a failure on a panel, you can literally drain down the tank, unbolt that panel and they can bolt another one in place.
Do they have any kind of warranty on these things?
Yeah, there would be a warranty as part of the, the construction project.
How, how long are we talking?
Um, at, at least the, the one-year standard warranty for a construction project, but extended warranties could be discussed. But in general, they, the issues relating to failure are more so. Not from a failure of the, the tank itself, but, you know, a lawnmower throwing a rock at the exterior, you know, something of that nature.
So there's actually the liner within the outside containment? You know, like how the digester is made, you have that blue. Thing on the outside, but there must be, is there an inside liner? Is that what you're talking about on the water tank?
So on the, the glass fuse to steel tanks are similar to how your hot water tank is at your house. Where it's like a baked on enamel to the, to the metal, so it's almost like a, a coating, if you will. That's, that's why they call it a composite tank, cause it's got mixed materials within the panel itself, but it's, it's like a glazed glass.
That's in, interior and exterior.
It's homogenous through the inside and outside.
I had a water tank with, with the solar panels that probably lasted twenty-two years before it started leaking, but I'm sure that the.
I mean, there is, there is maintenance involved with it, billers, anodes in there for protection, you know. That would have to be changed out, et cetera, so you know, the, any acid in the water, seeing an anode in that, you know, the tank and things of that nature. Like I said, the one we looked at in Southampton, all they did was regular routine maintenance to it, they haven't done anything, they haven't done any problems.
How long has it been up?
That's about ten years, it, it was the closest one in the area, there's others around, but we, we just went. To the closest option for us to go look at it and they haven't had any trouble with it at all. To the closest option for us to go look at it, uh, and they haven't had any trouble with it at all, uh. Uh, I I think it's a good option for us, I I would. From my experience, everyone was uh always pre-stressed concrete, that's the best way, that's the best way and. Uh, after our last water meeting, we we talked to the Athol DPW. I don't know if you you go down route two, you can see an elevated one there, uh, that's just the same style tank, but it's elevated. And he said that he would never dream about doing a pre-stress concrete out there. Doing the uh last line.
It's white market basket there.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah.
Scott, I I just checked, the the one that you saw was actually from nineteen ninety one, so thirty thirty two years old.
It's low, yeah.
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 Yeah. And they haven't had any trouble at all.
And and the other. Serious factor is the speed of impact of installation.
So so the the tank is built from the they they would build the roof first. And then they have a a jacking system that they raise it up, put panels, raise it up, put panels. Uh, you know, every all the panels are made offsite and brought to our site and they just form it and jack it and raise it, put it together.
So what kind of ceiling is between the panels as they construct it to keep them?
There there is gasketing material in there.
Okay.
Yep.
And does that ever wear out or?
Uh, the the Southampton tank we looked at uh did have of some. I'll call it talking, but it's not, it's like a urethane that it was touched on.
Okay.
But it is relatively simple.
Yes, yes.
To do.
That's the question.
Yep.
Okay, so. Explain how the the application for funding would work. I we have to go to town meeting, get approval for what?
Start the process.
Well, to do, yes.
Get a loan.
Yeah, so. Uh, if you want, I can describe the USDA funding process a bit, would that be helpful?
Yes.
Okay, so USDA, um, you you United States Department of Agriculture. Uh, they have a rural development program for water and and wastewater projects. Uh, so this fits your community very well, uh, they're for communities that are under ten thousand of population. And they have a loan grant program. Uh, there are two big advantages to you is that you can extend a loan on it for a forty year term. Most uh construction projects are twenty, maybe thirty year loans. Uh, the forty year loan gives you an extended period to to pay back the project. Uh, the other advantage is their grant portion, which uh you would. Most likely qualify for, but they won't uh document how much grant you'll get until you get. Deep into the application process. Um, we're we're actually in the process of starting the application on the town's behalf. But the USDA won't consider it complete until they have proof that the town has appropriated the funds for the project, so. The application can't be uh deemed uh acceptable and to move forward. Until after a town meeting approves those dollars, so it's it's a little bit of a chicken and egg, you kind of want to know. The grant you're getting, but they can't tell you the grant until you've funded the project. Um, so you have to take a a little bit of a faith, uh leap of faith to move forward at the full project value. With the the hope that you're gonna get some significant grants, uh, which could range of. Twenty, thirty, forty percent of of the the total project being grant dollars. But again, you know, only determined after they review the the full application.
So the the grant dollars that you're talking about, that's principal forgiveness?
Not principal forgiveness, um, they would actually uh start the project and you would. I'll I'll use a million dollars, cause it's easy numbers and it'll give you a twenty percent loan uh grant. So you would do uh eight hundred thousand of loan and then once the project has hit that dollar value. Then every month they would they would give you money to fund that month's bills as grant funds. So it would be a a monthly wire transfer for grant funds.
And Jeff, what sort of interest rate is USDA right now, so forty year up to forty year loan term and what kind of interest?
Yeah, they have three tiers, um. Call it low, middle in in market, um. The one that you will qualify for is to be determined, but I would say at least not. One step below market, so a a lower interest rate than than market, obviously, market interest rates are relatively high at the moment. Uh, they lock in the interest rate when they approve the application. But if the project moves forward and the interest rates drop, they do allow you to re-lock or lock it in at the lower rate. Um, I don't have the exact percentages in front of me at the moment.
Okay, but I mean, we're not looking at ten percent, we're looking at maybe four or five range.
Six point five maybe?
Yeah, yeah, whatever the town might be able to get on the open market, probably one or two percent less on the the USDA side.
Okay.
And Jeff, just just for uh. Doing this as a combined project, I know we talked about this, there is a little bit of price savings that. Uh, you know, mobilization charges, et cetera, it 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 is a little more cost effective to do both at once.
Could you describe a little more cost effective?
These money people.
Yeah. There are there are some savings, I don't. Uh, they'd have to give you that the exact numbers, but there is, we did talk about it.
Yeah, I think this is very, you know, we bring Linda in on this.
Yeah, so I and that's where the kind of the steps we wanted to take was, this is probably our third or fourth meeting with Danielle and um. Jeff, and we felt we really needed to come to you guys, but the next step would to be to sit with the finance team, sit with. On a monthly basis, we have Molly coming in from the select board and we have Amy coming in from. Finance committee to say, look, this is what we're looking at, um. And then be able to get that input as the as Linda's a part of that and is in charge of borrowing pretty much, so we would want to put this whole. Put this together, because we also need to look at our other projects and we want to bring back that long-term capital planning committee. To bring this into it as well, what we need though is the approval to get this on the wall. As as I'm putting the warrant together to have this on the warrant. You're not committing yourself right now, but just.
Yeah, the worst case scenario, we we plan on putting it on the warrant and if for whatever reason we're not ready, we can pull it or pass over it. Right.
Definitely. So is there any like? On the off chance or on whatever chance, it's hard to say. Um, this gets shot down at town meeting, are there um? Ramifications for us not updating as directed by the, was it DE?
DE, yes, there there would be uh consequences for. Not meeting their requirements and what those are, I I cannot answer to, but there would definitely be uh. Uh, some issues with that.
Okay.
You have you have to meet the safe the safe drinking water act, et cetera, there's, you know. Laws that we have to abide by, this this isn't uh. You know, a wish list, it's it's a it's a mandate.
So it's an unfunded mandate.
Yes.
So we have to do something, we have to decide what it is.
Right.
We would like to do.
Yep.
And the ongoing, like the once uh construction occurs, the ongoing maintenance costs, how does that compare to what we have? Right now?
It would it would it would be very. Very similar, uh, you know, like pressure washing, that's at a minimum, uh. The 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 cycle of diving the chick to take to inspect it, we already do that. It's it's the same kind of maintenance cost that we're incurring now, there's really no difference.
It'll let down maintenance. I got me to laugh.
Yeah.
It's a it's a.
Yeah.
We're paying.
Right.
A whole package.
Right, and then it seems like it's it's very easily maintained from the outside, well, we could see at Southampton that. Just pressure washing from the ground level, it it's fairly easily washed off the the coating on it, it's like a like a window, a glass, it. Whatever debris comes off relatively easy.
Hmm, um, in the, I was gonna ask also, is the. The cost for the construction of these, is it just solely? The two tanks or is it also include like any gravel that needs to go around it, any fencing? For preventing wildlife and humans from going near it?
Yeah, this is a, this is a complete project, uh. You know, lock, sock and barrel, uh, whatever it would, our our current parameters that we requested on. Uh, a new out at Mount Warner, there's a problem with the altitude valve, the vault is too small. It doesn't meet confined space standards, et cetera, et cetera, all that would be uh. Addressed in this tank, in a Mount Warner, there would be a new pipeline from the street to the tank because. That's another thing that's somewhat in limbo up there of placement, if if exactly where it is, we don't know. Uh, but we have the property surveyed now, so we know where our bounds are, so we can definitely get a new pipeline on our property and uh. Same amount Hoyoke, uh, the vault and stuff doesn't mean any kind of uh. Standards for confined space, et cetera, et cetera, for us to work in, so and things like that would be updated with the project. And we do have like static mixers and things and on that, uh, you know. That would be renew and replace that we do have maintenance costs on now that they're starting to. Have some age on them, so.
So from your experience, you're encouraging us to look at the glass tank rather than concrete.
Yes, uh, like I said, the the biggest reason why I think is the time, it it's it's so much faster to do, we just. When you take Mount Warner offline, there's gonna be a little bit of an issue, maybe uh a couple higher areas that.
Uh, can you move that security thing out there?
That's Alex too.
Yeah, hold on.
I was gonna ask earlier, but I don't want to interrupt anyone.
I don't know what happened, all of a sudden it just said disconnected.
It's a computer.
So is it possible to find another space at the Mount Warner area and build the new tank or will you take the other one offline?
Uh, no, there's not, because it's all uh.
Alex, are we broadcasting?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
It it's it's uh, I I Danielle.
Trustee's a reservation.
Yeah, the trustees own it and then the the about the reservation, uh, we own a very. Small piece of property there, so we looked at that and uh. Well, we were met one time, Carolyn had said, well, I'll buy another site in general, but unfortunately, it doesn't really work.
That way, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
For if somebody were to ask. Do we have total construction numbers for the concrete tanks? You're you're telling us it's nine million to do the glass tanks, do we have total construction cost estimates for the concrete tanks?
Yeah, so the difference between the concrete and the glass you'd steal is um like two hundred to five hundred thousand per, so. Um, for, let me just pull up. So to replace um Mount Warner and Mount Holyoke is one point three and one point five respectively for. The the glass fuse and then the concrete is one point six and one point seven. So that nine million number is conceptual inclusive of the glass fuse, so it would be um. Two hundred of five hundred thousand dollars more to go concrete.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I move that we accept your recommendation and go forward with putting the glass tanks on the spring lawn.
Start the process.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Alright, motion by Jane, seconded by Randy. Any further discussion or questions?
Um, just one quickly, it's part of the analysis, I mean, get no no personal ball, but. Interest rates are going to start coming down, question of how. Quickly and over what period of time and and where they're ultimately gonna get to, so. And and looking at the cost, um. You know, staggering can actually have some advantages on the borrowing side, even though it might. Have negatives on the cost, the construction side of it, so could you just wrap that into your?
Analysis?
And that, yeah, the the analysis as you go through.
Yes, did did you hear that, Danielle?
Yes, yeah, the construction costs will significantly increase over time, um. When compared to the interest rate, so it does make sense to do them sooner rather than waiting.
And one of the advantages of being remote is I did look up the interest rates right now. Uh, USDA has the the three tiers, as I mentioned, the low one is two point two five percent, just posted January first. Uh, the middle one is three percent and the market rate is three point seven five, so. You know, it's market, it's even depressed over what you can probably get in the the municipal market today outside of USDA.
And that gave me a chance to run an amortization schedule and it means that on a nine million dollar project over forty years. Even at three and a quarter, we're looking at a monthly payment of thirty three thousand, so we're really gonna wanna get that grant.
Yeah, and and part of and part of our process to uh Ty and Bond was gonna look at our water rates also. Um, because that obviously that's probably gonna have to be adjusted accordingly.
Do after him off the board, wait.
It's a good thing we looked at.
I said, don't make me announce.
But yeah, no, but those are all, I mean, taxpayers need to know all of it.
Yeah, no, I understand that and I'm trying to be really honest with this.
We're gonna start the process, I assume we will see more from you before town war town meeting shows up.
Yes, yeah, like uh Ty and Bond's been excellent to work with on this project and uh. I'm sure they'll have all our questions ready to be answered.
Well, they've been they've been here as long as I have, over twenty one years, we've worked with Ty and Bond, so they've been a staple in Hadley, so.
We do have an open uh motion on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do.
Alright, so all all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, excellent, thank you guys for coming to visit with us and explain everything and. Just answer all of our questions, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
I I'm I'm sorry to always come to your meeting and ask you for crazy amounts of money, but just unfortunately.
That's your job.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Why I have to get a job in a different state? Thanks, Scott. Alright, thank you.
Good night, Scott.
Good night.
I believe I just need one more motion for the night.
I move you, John.
Second.
Alright, motioned by Jane, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.